I'm gonna go ahead and open up the Granberry City Council Regular Meeting. It is 6:00 PM on Tuesday, May 7th, 2024. We are at Granberry City Hall, 116 West Bridge Street in Granberry, Texas. I want to remind everyone that this meeting is live and it can be found at www.granberry.org/live. So we are called to order and I'm gonna ask that Reverend Lada here from Congregational Church would lead us in prayer. If we could all stand, then we'll do the pledges. Thank you.
Let's sing the Doxology before we pray. [Singing] Praise God from whom all blessings flow. Praise Him all creatures here below. Praise Him above ye heavenly host. Praise Father, Son, and Holy Ghost. Amen. Lord, we thank you for our religious freedom and our political freedom. Well, Lord, we thank you for blessing us to be Americans and most of all, to be Texans. Lord, we thank you for citizenship in your kingdom and in this earthly nation in which we're blessed to be a part of. Lord, we ask for your blessing upon this meeting as we see our citizenship in operation. Thank you, Lord, for the electoral process and due process and the protocols that our forefathers put in place for us. Help us, Lord, to function as a community in the light of your love and order determined by our forefathers. In Jesus' name, we ask for your blessing again upon this meeting. And everybody said?
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On my behalf, I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you all. I don't know if it was noticed, but Mr. Kaufman did you all a tremendous favor. When I started singing, you turned the mic off. Thank you. They thank you. Okay, we are now to number four. We have a couple of proclamations and then some other opportunities will be presenting themselves tonight. So I'm gonna come down and read these two proclamations. The first proclamation I have is about Lemonade Day. Is there anyone here that's going to receive this proclamation? Ah, all of us. Well. So please do. Let me read this proclamation here. Whereas Lemonade Day is an innovative program dedicated to teaching school-aged children across the nation entrepreneurship by establishing a lemonade stand. And whereas the Granberry Chamber of Commerce, working in partnership with Constellation Wolf Hollow II, the Granberry Independent School District, and with assistance from local businesses and organizations, are helping fifth-grade students learn about business, financial education, and being a part of the community through the free program. And whereas the young entrepreneurs who participate in the program learn life skills through practical learning, the students earn money and are taught to spend a little, save a little, and share a little, donating a portion of their profits to the local charity of their choice. And whereas the City of Granberry commends the sponsors, organizers, and participants of this innovative program and extends best wishes for a successful and rewarding event. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Jim Jarrett, Mayor of the City of Granberry, do hereby proclaim Saturday, May 18, 2024, as-
Lemonade Day!
And encourage the community to purchase a cup of lemonade from one of the young entrepreneurs to demonstrate how our community cares for the future of our youth. It's given under my hand, the seal of the City of Granberry, on the 7th day of May 2024. Jim Jarrett, Mayor. And I have a question for you. How many young entrepreneurs have signed up?
We'll have over 60 lemonade stands.
Outstanding. So there'll be, what, three to four at each stand?
There's more to square follow.
Outstanding. 150? Okay. That is outstanding. Outstanding. So who gets the official proclamation?
I'll take it.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah. All right. I thank all of you for Lemonade Day. Okay. So as much fun as I can have at the Lemonade Day and that proclamation, it is with equal amount of pride that I'm able to do this proclamation. Could we have some of these public works people come up? Like 100 of them? Oh, I agree. You can stand here. Yeah, you stand here, yeah. I only buy them days that end in one. Yep. Not a problem. We have the choir arranged. All right. Let me go with this. This is with a tremendous sense of pride to be among these ladies and gentlemen up here tonight. Whereas public works service provided in the City of Granberry are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas public works and internal services professionals focus on providing the most effective and efficient operations that are critical for our community, such as maintenance and construction of roads, water supply, water treatment, and wastewater systems, engineering, electric distribution, fleet maintenance, and maintenance of public buildings and parks essential for our citizens. And whereas these infrastructure facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of the city's professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government. And whereas National Public Works Week is a celebration of the tens of thousands of men and women who provide and maintain the infrastructure, facilities, and services collectively known as public works, now therefore, it is resolved that I, Jim Jarrett, Mayor of the City of Granberry, do hereby proclaim the week of May 19 through 25, 2024, as National Public Works Week. It's given under my hand, the seal of the City of Granberry, on the 7th day of May 24. Jim Jarrett, Mayor. And let me say again, I couldn't be prouder. This is what makes this city great, right here. Thank you. There's a proclamation back there somewhere, but I can't get to it. There it goes. Thank you. All right. I can give this to each and every- well, Mr. Kaufman.
Give it to Paul.
Give it to Paul?
Yes, sir.
Sure. All right. Thank you, Paul. Thank you so much. Thanks for these people here.
We have three rows, so Joanna is on the Persian row. So some of you that are on the- also foursome, some of you that are four, for the rest of you, five in.
That's good. That's good. I had a meeting with the Pope. I got you, yeah.
Did you tell the mayor?
Yes.
Okay.
No, I asked him.
No, you tell him. You're lying about, boss.
I said, this is your show.
Oh, it's your show.
We'll do that. They're off to back to work. I'll tell you what, you wake up in the morning, the water's hot, the water is there, trash is already gone, the streets are clean. I am always- I tell this to Mr. Kaufman all the time. You cannot show up after one of the biggest events of the year and not show up to a very clean square and all the streets that are coming in. I am impressed every day that I get up in this city. It's outstanding. Mr. Vale, did you wanna?
Yes, I did.
I'd like to use, yeah.
Mr. Kaufman, if you could join?
Thank you, sir.
Boy, I sure know how to clear a crowd, don't I? Wow. It was standing room only just a minute ago. Some of you were there, the Pennels were there, obviously. I was invited to present the official proclamation at the National Firefighters' Day on May 4th. We did it at Station One, a little inclement weather that day, hosted by the Friends of Memorial Lane. And it was there to recognize National Firefighters' Day. In addition, they presented the Firefighters of the Year Awards to firefighters from each of the nine stations. Co-chairs for the event were Bob Pennell and Mickey Allen. And they chose the City of Granberry to receive the firefighter's flag, which I'm holding. Laura Fisher, actually Chairperson for the Friends of Memorial Lane, presented the flag
And that's, you know, that is a big thank you for the volunteer firefighters that we
to me, which I accepted. And I'm gonna present this flag to our city manager, Chris Kaufman, to be proudly displayed in our display case right outside of Council Chambers. So, Chris, on behalf of the Friends of Memorial Lane, and I accepted this, this is the firefighter's flag for the City of Granberry.
have. And Mr. Hafe, I see you out there. Have we raised that rating again, or has the ratings come in yet? The insurance ratings?
No, Mayor, the ISO review is June 10th.
June 10th, okay. We'll wait till then. Keep our fingers crossed. I mean, it's gonna be well-deserved, I know that. Mr. Kaufman and other members of the council here, we have an opportunity to issue encouraging statements and recognize any staff. But is there anything extra today?
I would like to add something that maybe goes unseen is during the political season, we had signs that had the word caution on it. We worked with the people that printed those and they changed them. Then another group came out with another wave of them. And our staff had to deal with that issue and they are still dealing with it. And they've done a great job in doing their job. And I just want to congratulate the code enforcement team and all the Department of Building and Inspections for taking care of business the way they need to with ethics and following the rules and at the same time, under persecution from people that challenged them, took their picture, probably threw rocks at them, and definitely called them a few names. So those people are appreciated and they're not part of the public works, they're part of the building inspection team. And so they're on the first floor and they do a great job for us. I just wanted to mention them tonight. So thank you.
Yeah. Applaud it. Thank you. Other items tonight? Okay. We had this- I tell you, the public works groups that's here, just, you know, wake up and, you know, wake up without hot water, no lights. That'll make you appreciate the meeting more. Okay. We're gonna move to number five. Nothing else. Public comments on the agenda items are for non-public hearing agenda items. Ms. Walker, do we have anyone that's signed up? No? I'll save some time by not reading through that then. I'm gonna move right on to the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are routine, previously discussed items and will be approved with one motion. However, should a member of the city council wish to discuss any item, said item may be removed from the consent agenda and considered under the deliberation agenda. Does anyone want to? Mr. Rodriguez?
Mayor, can we pull off 6.6, please?
Okay. We'll pull off 6.6. We'll discuss that in a second. Does anyone else want to take anything? Pull off? Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Mr. Wadley?
Second.
Second by Mr. Overdeer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. I hear no nays. That will pass. Everyone's here tonight, six and oh. Mr. Rodriguez, comment on the number 6.6?
Yeah. Mayor, on the consent agenda, it is written as consider approving the purchase of information technology for the new airport terminal building from Martin's Office Supply, and that is incorrect. We are purchasing the equipment from Calyon Corporation, so I'd like to table this and get it corrected and then put it on the next city council's agenda for the May-
21st.
21st city council.
Do I hear that as a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Rodriguez makes the motion. There is a second.
Second.
Mr. Corgan makes the second. So we will move that from the consent agenda and re-have it placed on the May 21st, next in two weeks' agenda. Thank you for catching that.
You got a question?
What's this? Oh, yes, we do. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Thank you, Ms. Walker. Keep us straight, or me. Numbers, we're gonna move to the deliberation agenda, 7.1. We have a public hearing here. We'll open up the public hearing in a few minutes after we hear from Mr. Kaufman and staff. Mr. Kaufman?
So as we prepared this agenda item for tonight, it came very clear that we needed to work on the ordinance some more for clarity, for simplicity of administration, and just make it more user-friendly as well for the citizens that need to adhere to the rules. So with that, I would ask that you consider tabling this motion definitely to August 6th of 2024 to give us a little bit of time to work through this. This kind of conflicts with our budget process that we're going through right now, and the budget has priority over this change in amendments. And so looking at the schedule with staff, we agreed that August 6th would be the best time to bring this back and hopefully have it fixed and ready to go. That's a Texas term, "fixed." And we're gonna make sure it fits Texas as it gets fixed, so.
I had, as I was going through this, one of the comments that I wanted to make was to just say thank you for the exceptional heavy lifting, and this is heavy lifting.
A lot of heavy lifting, yeah.
If you guys have gone through these ordinances, this is heavy lifting. So, yeah, I would entertain a motion to delay this until, or to table it definitely till August 6th.
Mr. Mayor, make that motion.
Mr. Wadley makes the motion.
I second.
Mr. Rodriguez seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. I hear no nays. That will pass at 6 and oh. Number 7.2, another public hearing. Consider adopting ordinance number 24-29 approving the request of Timothy H. Dobbs for a specific use permit to allow a manufactured home in Interim Holding District. The property is located at 1020 Valley View Street. So, Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for a manufactured home to be installed where the house previously burned. Kind of an unusual situation. I'll turn it over to Kara Wallow, we are Director of Community Development, to go through this agenda item prior to the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. So as usual, we provide a location map for you. The site is outlined in teal. It's located north of Moore Street on Valley View. As Mr. Kaufman mentioned, there was a home on this site. It was a stick-built house and it burnt down. The applicant requests to replace that previously burnt-down residential structure with a new home. And the new home would be a manufactured home. Oops. Here we go. And so the site is zoned Interim Holding. In the Interim Holding District, a SUP, special use permit, is required to be approved prior to placement of manufactured home on the site. And this shows the site plan. There's a kind of a rectangle in the middle of the site. That's the proposed new home to be placed on the site. There are some other existing buildings that are on the site, maybe that will be used. The applicant could probably speak a little more to that, but those are there and provides, you know, improvements to the property. And that looped drawing or the U shape is the drive that's also existing. The zoning ordinance for a specific use permit requires a statement of support to the project, and that's what staff has provided, it's in your staff report as well. All these statements speak to the compatibility and nature of the surrounding uses and will a new home fit in this area. Staff is finding that the use is reasonable and the home can be compatible in this particular location. There's also regulations that come into play for this type of a use, and those are also in your staff report. In summary, some of these do reflect the previous slide that I just showed, which is speaking to the compatibility. And this one is, site's already been developed and the new residence will be placed on where the old one was. The property is zoned IH and has road frontage. Conditions may be imposed if needed. And these are standard requirements for a building permit and requirements that are out of our city code they need to comply with as the applicant. And Board of Adjustment is included in these regulations. The applicant did request a variance from the Board of Adjustment to reduce setbacks. However, those setbacks come closer to complying with the ordinance as compared to the old home or the prior home. On March 8th, staff mailed out notices to 13 property owners. And we also published in the newspaper on March 23rd. We did not receive any letters or letters in favor nor in opposition to the request. Staff's recommending approval. And the Planning and Zoning Commission also recommended approval with a unanimous vote. And these are your voting options. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have some. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, have questions for Ms. Wallow? No? I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing, and I see that Mr. Dobbs is already at the podium there. If you would like to make comments, that's fine, and since you're there. If counsel has any questions for Mr. Dobbs? Pretty straightforward? No? Okay. No one has? Anyone else want to speak? Okay. No one else is speaking? I'll go ahead and close the public.
Mr. Dobbs won't speak?
Mr. Dobbs, I understood, yes, he signed up to speak. But go ahead, Mr. Dobbs.
Oh, just answer any questions.
Okay. Very good. Okay.
Mayor, just got one comment. Mr. Dobbs, thank you for being patient and through this process. I don't want to sit here and say that I understand your situation. Your house burned down. You're getting a new house to get to live in. So appreciate your patience during this process, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Other comments or questions for Mr. Dobbs? I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing then. Other questions or do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Vale?
I'm making a motion to approve the SUP as presented.
It's Mr. Overdeer, correct? Okay.
Second.
And seconded by Mr. Vale. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That will pass 6 and oh. Excuse me. Wow. 7.3 is consider approving change order number one to preload LLC for the amount of $57,219 and extending the time of the agreement for an additional eight weeks for a suction line modification letter. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you, Mayor. We have Interim Public Works Director Paul Gass with us tonight that can make a presentation on this. So I'll turn it over to him this time.
Sir?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Counsel. As it shows, it's for a change order to the project. If y'all are familiar with where Knox 1 is, out on Peluxi Road, it's one of the 1 million-gallon ground storage tanks, provides capacity to the central pressure plane, but it is also used to pump up to Knox 2, which is out on Meadowwood Road. The project was started last year, and the original plan was to build the new ground storage tank, which is there, and then was plumbed in to abandon the existing tank. As the process has gone on, we've realized that the other tank may just need to be repaired, may not need to be completely abandoned. And therefore, since we'll need to shut the water off to make these tie-ins, we could do one shutdown, add in a T and the valving to both tanks, which would allow the tanks to be used together or individually. And then in the future, if we have to rebuild or when we do have to repair the existing tank, we can shut that tank off but leave the new tank in service. So this change order is going to extend it for eight weeks to give the contractors time to work and just to change the plumbing so that we can have both tanks available to us or then use them individually as well.
Thank you, Paul. I might just add that the option of repairing the first tank, Knox 1 tank, was not available because we need that million gallons of water in the system and we couldn't take it off and put it on a standby pump to provide for that. So that's why we were building the new tank. And so what this does is it allows us to end up with about 1.8 million gallons of water above ground, and it's at the elevation on that hill that those two tanks perform like an elevated ground storage, elevated tank. And so we're gonna get some really good points on our ISO rating as well for having that additional water up there. That will be a separate project to rehab that old tank, and we will probably need to do that within the next 12 months because of the condition it's in. So y'all recall the pictures that we provided you, how rushed it out at the top it was? So we're gonna have to probably make that tank a little shorter. I don't know, the engineer's gotta figure all that out. He's here to answer any questions you may have, but we do need to try to save this. For the change order price of $57,000, it's a good deal not to tear that down, so.
Could you just remind us again what those tanks service? What's their service area?
The western water plane, which primarily is the hospital. Chris, why don't you come up and- I know Paul-
was not available because we need that million gallons of water in the system, and we couldn't take it off and put it on a standby pump to provide for that. So that's why we were building the new tank. And so what this does is it allows us to end up with about 1.8 million gallons of water above ground, and it's at the elevation on that hill that those two tanks perform like an elevated ground storage, elevated tank. And so we're going to get some really good points on our ISO rating as well for having that additional water up there. That will be a separate project to rehab that old tank, and we will probably need to do that within the next 12 months because of the condition it's in. So y'all recall the pictures that we provided you, how rushed it out at the top it was? So we're going to have to probably make that tank a little shorter. I don't know, the engineer's got to figure all that out. He's here to answer any questions you may have. But we do need to try to save this. And for the change order price of $57,000, it's a good deal not to tear that down, so.
Could you just remind us again what those tanks service? What's their service area?
The western water plane, which primarily is the hospital. Chris, why don't you come up and, I know Paul could do it, but I think Chris has got the mapping done of our entire city and understands the future better than anybody on what we're going to be doing with water planes and shipping water around different sides of the town, so.
Yes, sir. The Knox 1 ground storage tank currently serves as elevated storage for the central pressure plane, which is everything east of the airport and west of Scout Camp, if you know where Scout Camp is, or basically Business 377 and US 377. So it serves the majority of your system. It also serves as ground storage for the west pressure plane, which includes the hospital and the airport, and I believe the high school as well. So there are pumps at that side that pump it to another tank on Meadowwood Road that serves as elevated for the west pressure plane. So it's a key component to your system. And like Mr. Kaufman said, you can't take it out of service right now without a replacement because you'd lose the capacity and the pressure that it provides your system. So due to the condition that it's in, that's why a new tank is being constructed now. This change order will allow you to valve it off and utilize it in the future for an additional million gallons of ground storage for the west pressure plane, which is a key pressure plane with high priority customers, especially with the hospital and the airport and the high school. So that's, in a nutshell, I'd be happy to answer any additional questions you may have.
Mr. Wiley?
When will the new tank come online?
The original completion date of the project was supposed to be substantially complete on June 2nd. This change order is going to push that back a little bit, but it'll be tested and online this summer.
And then when the new one comes online, will you take the old one off until we decide to do the repairs and all that?
Yes. Then these valve improvements will be needed to do that. But the new tank will come online, the old tank will be isolated from the system. At that point, it could be drained and rehabbed whenever the next project kicks off.
Thank you very much.
Other comments, questions? You know, we think of water as, you know, for drinking and for bathing, but let's not forget that it's also out there for fire prevention. And this is a, like you said, this is a high priority area, no question about it. Other comments? All right. We have, I'm going to go ahead and entertain a motion to approve change order number one to preload LLC for the amount of $57,219, which will extend the time, and extend the time of the agreement for an additional eight weeks.
So moved.
Dr. Wiley makes a motion.
Second.
Mr. Corrigan makes a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. That will pass 6-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Paul, thank you. Chris, thank you so much. Number 7.4, consider making an appointment to the Historic Preservation Commission to fill the vacancy. Mr. Kaufman?
You bet. We've got a vacancy on our Historic Preservation Commission due to a member moving out of the district and out to the parts unknown in the county. So we do have an applicant that has qualified. Kay Wazuleski is available and has been in the listing, and we've verified with her she's still interested to serve in this capacity as she is. At least she's here tonight. And can answer any questions you may have. Counsel will leave it up to, or staff will leave it up to counsel for your selection process.
Counsel, do you have questions for Ms. Wazuleski? Just here?
Mr. Mayor? I have no questions.
Yes, Mr. Overdeer.
I know Kay, I know her husband's Dan. In fact, I go to church with both of them. And I know Kay is already on the Granbury Parks Board, and she's certainly going to do a great job. I'd like to make a motion to consider her for appointment to the Historic Preservation Commission.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Corrigan seconds that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I believe that passes, and once again, we have Wazuleski on the Historic Commission. It comes back, good. Okay. Ms. Walker, do we have anyone that's signed up for citizen comments? So we'll pass on number eight, since no one has signed up. And with that, we are through with our agenda items. We will proceed into executive session. Thank you. Okay. And I declare that the Granbury City Council reconvenes into open session. There was no action taken in closed session, and all council members are present. Counsel, any other comments? Any business to be...
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Vale?
I would like to move to authorize the city manager to transfer from the general fund to allocate up to $3 million to the Granbury Historical Properties for the purchase of the property known as Granbury Square Plaza, subject to review and approval of the city's bond council. Alternatively, if the bond council advises against the purchase of their historic, Granbury Historic Properties, the council authorizes the city manager to complete the transaction in the name of the city of Granbury.
So that motion is made. Does anyone want any clarification on the motion?
Second.
If it was second made, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion will pass 6-0. Other comments, questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Vale?
I'd like to authorize the city attorney to file a lawsuit against Eagle Store and any other responsible parties due to the negligence related to the damage and interruption of the city's main transmission line located near 800 Panama Court in Granbury, Texas.
Motion's been made. Mr. Corrigan seconds the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. That motion too will pass 6-0. Are there other items? Mr. Overdeer? Mr. Vale? No? Nope? Okay. Having there being no other business, I announce this meeting closed. Thank you.